My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma. And just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So we have minutes on the September 3 meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the September 3, 2024 meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Got it.
Then we have payroll, two of them, one amount of $261,244.44 and the other two Union Hospital Security of $2,818.9.
I'll make a motion, we approve both payrolls as submitted by the audit, irregular payroll of $261,244.44 and the security payroll of $2,818.9.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. All right, so next up, we have to approve the accounts payable, I'm sorry, we have to acknowledge receipt of the payable claims accounts payable report, and that's $192,303.8.
I'll make a motion, we acknowledge the received payroll claims accounts payable report, $192,303.8.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have claims.
I don't think there is any claims.
Okay. All right, then we'll go into new business. Do you have some out cycle check requests?
Three.
Okay.
The first is for Stryker, it's for batteries for the Lucas devices.
Okay.
And the amount of $6,244.56.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the out cycle checks to Stryker for $6,244.56 and batteries for the Lucas devices.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Second is for BS Engineering, it's the work on the Melcher Bridge, and the amount of $15,681.51.
Okay, go ahead with the other one for Melcher, I mean for BS.
BS Engineering for all the bridge inspections. Jamie did say it's the normal bridge inspection, so I'm guessing you guys understand that.
Yeah.
For $111,191.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the out cycle checks to BS Engineering, one check for the engineering on Melcher Bridge in the amount of $15,681.51 and then the second to for the normal bridge inspections in the amount of $111,191.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
We do have some new business actually going on, so I invited George to come and present us. So George, if you will come up, remember we were talking about inspection, I mean insurance for IT, for internet.
You want a chair, George.
What's that?
You want a chair.
Or you can pull around the end of it, like wherever you're comfortable, whatever works for you. And so we weren't eligible before because we did not have in place a multifaceted approval program, which now we do have, and so now we are eligible. So he has done some research on this and has some numbers for us to look at. Just keeping in mind that Clay County was just held up our ransomware, so it does happen, it's out there, so we need to be aware. We were of the impression that we were covered by the state program that was newly created, but that's purely a monitoring system instead of an insurance system, so we need to get ourselves, now that we are eligible through our multifaceted, what's the word?
Authentication.
Authentication, that's the word, I didn't remember what it was, then we are covered by that. So now, see what we have options.
Okay. Run this out, of course, I'm an independent agent, I can get quotes from a lot of people. I've received quotes from travelers and had one fail to quote, and then CFC, which I use CFC quite a bit, I haven't had to use them yet, but I do use them with a lot of my municipalities. It gave you two options, is basically what it boils down to, it's the same deductibles and everything.
Okay.
If you turn to the second page, you'll see your deductibles there, like incident response costs, your deductibles there.
Okay.
Then as you go on down, $5,000 deductibles, just depending what all hits, and then the post breach remediation cost is no deductible on that either.
Okay.
And so it's identical, the deductibles are identical on both of my options. The difference is, one of the options is $1 million in coverage, the other option's $2 million in coverage.
Okay.
Of course, that $1 million in coverage is $9,063 a year plus a $250 policy fee.
Right.
And then if you go to the divider, just to color a sheet of paper, $2 million in coverage is $13,475 plus a $250 policy fee.
Okay.
And I did want to verify, I think I know the answer, but you are tax exempt, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Have you, I mean, again, Jim mentioned Clay County just got it, and I've read in papers, I don't know how much you've read as far as different municipalities getting hit by this, but what is the, I don't know how to say it, what's the payout that these places normally are required, requiring you to pay to get your information back?
A lot of it.
A million to me? I don't know if a million dollar coverage is enough or two million.
Clay County got out for $25,000, which is an amazing number to get out of that for.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
I assume they paid, I didn't, I hadn't heard, but no, it's not.
$25,000.
It just really depends, and one of the things that CFC will do, somebody within the government will need to, probably your IT guy, will need to download an app, a device. CFC, you guys have already, you didn't even know about it, I warned you it was going to happen. One of the things they do is they try to breach your system. Before they'll give me a quote, they try to breach your system, just see how susceptible you are. And they will run periodic tests. Anytime there's a breach coming in or something like that, they're going to be notified, and whoever we put in charge, that's why I was thinking maybe the IT, because they're going to get alerted and can immediately start taking steps to shut things down or to head things off before we get to the ransomware point of view. They're going to make recommendations, they're, and like I said periodically, they're going to try to, for lack of a better words, hack your system.
And what you just don't know from what I've read about that, you know, you think you're safe, you've got things sent to the cloud, but even the things that you've sent to the cloud can be coded such that once you retrieve them, now bang, that's gone too. You don't know who's been doing what for how long and what's embedded and how many backdoors into stuff that you have, you just don't know.
That's right.
So as much as Randy Cleaver knows, and he's the guy with the stuff, even he would tell you that, I can only do what they let me see. I mean, there's stuff, I can't see, you can't with very light a code on that stuff, figure out what's where, so.
That's right.
The difference is between $1 million and $2 million is $4,000 a year more, $9,000 versus $13,000.
I was just trying to get in my old mind where we, but I realized that it could be different.
Yes, ma'am.
At my treasures conference, you know, Clay was hit for $25,000, Monroe was hit for $900,000.
Wow.
Okay, that's what I was just curious, on the different prices people were.
What are some carve outs in the policy that it won't cover, like they, you always hear about policies not covering acts of God. I assume all policies have some carve outs like that.
The only carve outs you're going to have on this is intentional acts, and that's on any insurance policy. If you intentionally have somebody here within, internally.
You open the door for them, then you're.
That's right. If you have an intentional act, and I'm not talking somebody that has an email, that we've all got, that gets an email that we think is from somebody we know, and we go to open it and realize immediately that we don't want to follow down this rabbit hole, so.
You know, I don't want to spend $4,000 bucks, we don't need to spend $4,000 bucks, but since we don't know where we are in this active, I kind of lean toward the first year, at least, that we get a chance to see where we are and go that way, and if we think, yeah, for other experiences of other kinds of places, that maybe it means enough coverage, then maybe we back off to that.
Later on, yeah.
Well, we, to me, we absolutely have to have it, there's no question about having to have it, so. What do you think? Going to two, makes sense for $4,000 more?
You've got anything you want to throw out?
I just, you know, first couple of years, yeah, I mean.
Then we can modify it as we go and see where we are.
Well, that, and especially after they've had chances to try to access the system and things like that, I mean, right now, we don't know what we don't know.
Right. I'd make that motion, then that we go to CFC or our, I don't even know what that type of insurance is called.
Cyber insurance.
Cyber insurance, and if you go that way for the, for the $2 million, add $13,475 plus a $250 policy fee.
Good, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's a claim on it, are there restrictions on what the claim money can be spent towards? Can it only be spent towards IT? Can it be spent towards any disruption of government service, laws?
It covers a broad range of information.
It'd be like insurance, we'd be paid the money than we do with law enforcement.
There's a claim reparation cost, there's hardware replacement cost, there's, the list is, I could really bore you all if you wanted me to.
That's okay. All right, George, I appreciate it. All right. Thanks for getting back with this.
I'll get everything filled out and get it sent over for signature.
Okay. While we're still doing that, then I'd make the motion that be authorized for me to sign the contract once George gets it done.
Yeah.
And it's approved by Nick.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Nick, we get it, we'll get it to you, you look at it, if you're okay, then I'll get it over and sign it.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it, thank you.
I'll read it to them.
You too.
Thanks.
That's twice actually somebody's hand said now, I'm getting kind of useless, maybe my age will work, I don't have stand up.
Thanks, George.
Thanks, George.
Everybody have a good day.
Okay, Luke is here from Highway Department, so what you got, Luke?
Um.
Why don't you pull your chair up here at the end someplace, without one in front of it, here, so you can sit, personally, but also expect you up and see you here real well, too. Put it right on the table there someplace that you're comfortable, and tell us what you got. Things are going okay?
Things are going great.
Great.
The Community Crossings grant, the work to be performed was supposed to start today, but I'm waiting for a call back from the operations manager, looks like it might be pushed back up to two weeks.
They have them 775?
And 800, 200 north, 500 north.
He's aware they cannot be doing that during covered bridge festival?
Yes, yeah, and I let them know that's discouraging, just because of the date that it's been planned before.
Yeah.
So I'll talk to operations managers, hopefully soon as they're.
You see, but they can't be doing that while we have covered bridge traffic, so if they have to wait till it's over, then that's, have to wait till it's over.
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the good thing is, they move fast on their own.
Yeah, I know they do, yeah.
See, we've been working on covered bridge routes, just kind of cleaning them up, road edges, brush, been working with transportation for the school systems to make sure it's safe, like brush, rough roads, talked to her even today, that's going on. I've got several applications coming through, which is huge.
Great.
Department, got a couple CDL people, one that we hired today.
Great. Just so you know, on the CDL, I talked to the lady again, now it's been running around in that for several months, trying to get this going. No one was really sure what was going on as to how that would work. It is funded through Work One with a stick. To meet Work One requirements, to be eligible to be reimbursed by the state, you'd have to be at a certain pay level, which we were not in prior years when we tried to do this. Our $19 an hour now for truck drivers is adequate to meet the policy. However, there are very few places that offer the training. There are some that do, the A, we don't want the A, it's much more expensive, we're looking just for the B, that's all they need is a B. And Greencastle, Area 30 did do those, they're not sure they're doing them now, so I talked to a lady today a couple of times, in fact, who's really trying to put this together, along with Mike Smith down at Terre Haute at Work Development, Workforce Development Board. And so she's going to email me some information, but Mike suggests we hold off until we've secured someone who does the training. IB Tech has done it some, and they will do it again. Greencastle, Area 30 has done it some, and they may do it again, but right now, they're not doing the B because they don't have anybody to teach it. So that still may be on hold until they can secure someplace for it to go, but once that occurs, and then we'll contact the people that want to do it from the department, we'll get, we'll get them going. That will need to be paid for by the county upfront, whatever the cost is, and then after, the state requires a six month stay, we talked about a longer requirement for our people to take value of that, then we get, after six months, we would get reimbursed by the state. If they were to leave before that six months, that employee would be required to pay the county for that, for that upgrade that they just had in their CDL lessons. So that's where that stands. I know you're curious about where the CDLs are, but that's where it is. They're not aware of anybody doing CDLs. You thought maybe you knew someone that worked so much, you can go get CDL training now?
Of course. So I, yeah, I've been looking everywhere, it's like I told the guys, they're all excited.
Oh, I know, I want to get it done, we've been working months on this.
But I tell them, without anything 100% that will happen at a later time, we have to start looking at other resources.
I agree.
I got guys that love their job, love what they're doing, and they know that CDL will.
Yeah, and in that case, they have to pay for that their own, because there's no state programs to do that probably individually, the state's not doing individuals at all, they're only doing corporate now, and we more qualify as corporate, so.
Okay. No, I'm not real, I don't, I call places and even online, there's facilities and maybe.
She's going to look, if you find someplace, let me know.
As Dan said, he sends his all the way to Missouri, I think he told us, he has to send his to Missouri, that's a two day course, if I remember right, they get it in two days, and they spend the night, one night there, but he sends them somewhere in Missouri for his business.
This is the driving portion, right?
Yes.
Because they still do the test at that B and B.
That I don't know about.
I can't tell you.
You have to take, even if you get the CDL certification, you have to go to the B and B and get your CDL license, two different things between the CDL certification, CDL license.
Two days is remarkable.
But Dan, he's in Montana right now, a family death, but when he gets back, you might check with him. I don't know, I have no idea what the name of the company is.
There's one in Columbus, Indiana.
Columbus, okay.
Indiana CDL Training.
The school doesn't do that for individuals, do they?
No, they don't.
I mean, they've got that trucking program, and it's a great program for the high school kids, but.
I do think they'll get there, but they're not there yet.
That'd be a revenue source for them.
It would be. Right now, the insurance issues are.
Yeah, that's probably.
Well, even the schools that I've learned about are two to four weeks, two days, but.
Dan told us a couple of months ago, two days.
Two to four weeks, I think, is just a few hours of a night thing. This is very immersed in it for two days, so I think that's what they do. So I talked to Dan, see about, see whether that works.
That makes sense.
I don't know what the cost would be for it, but see that, how that would work.
Yeah.
Makes no difference to me how we pay for that, even if we pay it ourselves, but of course, we'd rather have the state pay for that, that's what the programs are for, but they need to be a little more work friendly than they are.
Yeah, because they kind of lay, I think we lose money that way, too, maybe what's just might be some kind of match with the employee or something, or.
We'll see what our options are, see what the costs are, and see what they tell us from the state, if they find someplace.
I just sent you, they, IN.gov has a composite list of places that do it throughout the state, I just sent.
Now, why doesn't she know that? That's who I talked to, she was going to have a look around, try to find someplace that does it. This is the lady that does that program. Why wouldn't she know?
This is IN.gov.
You just did it in two minutes on your phone.
You're showing off.
I'm supposed to find stuff quickly, that's kind of our thing.
You're special.
Didn't go to Google.
I appreciate it, recognizing the department needing CDL drivers.
Oh, we know, we know.
Exhausting old resources, yeah, but we have a.
I have one, but I don't want to drive snow trucks, so just keep that in mind.
We do have, the guy we hired today is Class B CDL, and we have one applicant of the Class A, just waiting on a call back.
Good. Did you get your banners that we're hiring upfront?
I've got them, we just haven't got them put up yet. Kind of holding on.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're getting applicants, we weren't getting applicants before, so I'm glad you're getting applicants.
Yeah, we got one player that wants to return, we'll reach out to him and see if we can work something out.
I have heard several good things from, secondhand from county workers who have talked to other people who talked to me and say that they, it was a struggle at first, but they, they're feeling more comfortable now, and they think the struggle was nothing to do with you or Randy retiring, it's just people, so.
Yeah.
I'm encouraged that it's going to calm down, we're going to get work done.
Yeah, sometimes it's uncertainty, there's a lot of.
Oh, absolutely.
Fear.
Absolutely, I agree.
And then we always know the truth prevails, like.
It may take a while, but.
Yeah, we're all going through it together, we're all in it together.
And I appreciate your attitude toward that, and I appreciate that you're spending time and training people and showing people, if we can do this, right? You may not be aware, but I've driven 775 a few times, on that road, that was a road that Community Crossings was coming in to, to do, and as often happens in all counties, it's not just us, often in all counties, you get a paving job done, and then you have a culvert fail. And then, so your Randy road just put in, you got to cut that, cut that Randy road up and put a culvert in, and now you've got junk again. Well, he and his crew have replaced several culverts, I just drove out the other day and got some good ditch, good embankments. How many culverts did you replace there for the 7?
I think, I've got 11 now. There's four theme we're wanting to do, and a big part of that was, not just replacing the old ones, but coming up with a whole new design based on the volume of water, there was some topographical changes.
It's a valve.
A mile, within a mile away, those topographical changes increased the volume of water in a heavy rain, not just refreshing, some of it was countering itself and being effective. We changed the whole drainage system in a different way.
And I understand we won't be able to do that to every road, but we can make improvements on every road, and that's what I explained to the council the other day, we're no longer, and this is nothing against Randy at all, Randy was completely bound by the amount of money that we have, and you are too, and it's, it's a shock for you to be bound by the budget that you have, but you're living within that and learning that, but we're not just patching roads anymore, we're, we're doing every attempt to repair roads, we won't have to do that again. And there'll be a whole new outlook on how, how we use some things, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I suppose we have more time, even before this paving.
Yeah, well, next year, right now, you're just trying to, trying to get caught up and get this stuff done before winter gets here, I understand that, so over the winter, we'll have time to talk and plan, and next year, to be your plan, what we're working on, instead of you just fulfilling someone else's ideas, and so it's good.
Yeah, I'm with the advantage, I'm still new, I saw that energy, but we're working with Randy's wisdom and still maintaining his plans and list.
Good. I, I think it's really good and commendable that you and Randy meet in time and time and talk about stuff, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I see his wisdom, I have a lot of respect for him, even.
Randy in no way was thrown away, Randy had health issues, but he was going to retire anyway, we didn't have time to plan on retirement because of health issues called it to do it early, and that kind of caught us by surprise there, so I think we're maintaining well.
Yeah.
Winter will be the test, see if we get snow off the, off the roads, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, I want some snow. Yeah, so that's, and then we've got applicants for good, CDL, and then I was going to ask the commissioners at some point, getting some history on Leatherwood Bridge, Beeson Bridge, as far as responsibility.
That responsibility on those bridges is all private, it all belongs to Billy Creek Village. I don't know what year that transferred, Pam, do you remember what year those bridges were transferred by the commissioners, PCI, and then PCI transferred to Billy Creek?
931, I think.
Yeah, it was before me, but it was a long time ago, and that's something to me should never have occurred, but I may have been commissioner when they were transferred, but I think once they got the PCI hand, then it was just up to PCI, so they were privately owned. My hope, and I had talked with Charlie before, when he, when he was still with us, about transferring those bridges back to county property, and all we would need would be an agreement perpetuity so we can keep them where they are and have access to them as we need it, but that has not occurred yet, that's not to say that it won't. Beeson Bridges needs repairs desperately, and we were asked if we would do that, but there's no way, I can't spend tax dollars to work on a private, private bridge, I can't do that, so. So that's, that was an impetus to try to get Charlie to sign those back over to the county, so we could immediately take care of those, but right now, the answer to your question is, those are privately owned, we have no jurisdiction at all.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm the same way thinking, preservation, you know, I'm pretty, I just was concerned.
I mean, it's such a, such an odd situation, I mean, if they wanted to tear those down and haul them off for sale, they could do that, but they're bridges, we don't want that happening, so.
Yeah, I wish we could fix them.
I'm working on it, we'll see how that works.
And the reason why, I was trying to get 100% calibility on our bridge inventory, we've got three bridges being repaired starting Wednesday, Collin Ford, Mansfield, and, can't think of the three off the top of my head. And then we're trying to squeeze in more before cover bridge, and all it is, is we're contracting out, having the roofs repaired.
Okay.
Just, I was going to come to you guys for permission, and that's kind of why I bring it up, if you guys are okay with that, it's the same contractor we've used that paints them.
Now, we need to talk, because typically, the Commission of Visitors Commission shares the cost on some of those bridges every year for repair and siding, as we talked about before, and we have two bridges that we've already approved, one for a siding job, and that would be the Thorpe Ford Bridge, which hasn't happened yet, Dan's crew, Sunscrew is going to do that, but they've got delayed, that still needs to be done, and the Sim Smith Bridge, we agreed on a year ago. So some of those bridges are cost shared with the Commission of Visitors Commission, as well as the Highway Department itself.
Perfect.
So be sure you check with me and CVC before you commit to some of those bridges, because it may be funds shared to do that with.
Yeah, and they're.
And what we can't do is just reimburse you for half the cost, we had to be part of the contractor in order to get that done.
Yeah.
We just can't transfer money from here to the County Highway Department, we have to hire some contractor to do this work, and have to have a contract and show when we did that.
Yeah, I say we're doing.
That's right.
I say we're doing three bridges now and more, I got the quotes for them today.
Okay.
And that's your problem here, but just wanted to talk to you guys about it.
Yeah, be sure, and we've had that discussion before, be sure before you make any changes to those bridges, that commissioners approve everything, I'm talking whether it's paint, board changes, anything, those are absolutely our responsibility, and so if you were to say you contracted to do a roof, but we may have decided at some point that we were going to change the, change the roof, go from wood to, to metal, and we may make that choice, because we're typically heading metal, because originally, they would have been metal, and so before you contract any of those changes out for those bridges, I mean, those are really special things, be sure you check with us that you got our approval before you contract out, anything to be done on, whether it be paint or anything, because Whether it be paint or anything, because we don't paint bridges anymore either. Those are all stained now instead of, instead of painted. So that's all brand new to you. So that's not, nothing against you at all. I'm not saying that.
No, you're fine.
But this is a brand new territory. Even, you're, you're never going to be in a place where those are so treasured that the Board of County Commissioners, whoever that is, is responsible for maintaining those. And, and that entity will be the ones making decisions on what paint will be used on, what roofing will be used on, and what siding. Some rubber bridges have, uh, car siding. Some of our bridges have, uh, ship lap. Some of them are just board and battens. So we have to make that choice on what we're going to do with those. And then, and you see, you come to us with a proposal. If we approve it, then you're, you're good to go, but you got to get our approval before you do that.
Yeah, that's understood. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it is a good way to do it. That keeps everybody informed what's going on and where, and, and worse than for us is, is someone to call and ask, why are you doing this to that bridge? And we're like, I don't know. Why do we do it?
Right.
We don't want to be in that boat, so be sure.
Yeah, the roofs are my biggest concern right now. And, um, uh, we've got this guy, he does, um, silos, different stuff like that. Now, his schedule's freed up. Now he is available, so we're trying to, um, get it on the schedule.
Okay. Um. Just before you.
When can I, I don't know. I should have brought those, uh, quotes today, I guess.
Yeah, bring them. Bring them next time.
Yeah, and then, um.
Those things, we, we can't do that just by contacting you and disagreeing even with email. That has to be in an open meeting.
Okay.
Make that up and receive those. We don't have to bid those processes up because they're a little low, they're below the threshold requiring many, but we still have to approve those and see those in an open meeting.
Can you email me the contracts when you get the contracts? That way I can read them without having to do it in the public.
And understand, this is nothing against you. This is all brand new to you, how this works. You're used, like you talked about, you know, when you were with, uh, the army all those years, you never had to worry about gas. You ran out of gas, just buy more. Well, you've got a line item on, on gas now, so you got to worry about all this.
No, those bridges are special.
They are. They are.
Um, yeah, they need that second thought. Yeah.
So make sure that we, make sure we, we approve everything that you do to them.
Uh, yeah, it's no problem.
Okay, great.
Um, but yeah, uh, we do have an internal bridge inspection, uh, that we've done, uh, in our department, and we've inspected every single bridge. Uh, we got a report, and I'll share that with you as well.
Okay.
Um, just what we're capable of doing, what we thought needs contracted out.
Okay.
And, um.
Sounds good.
And then also check off what's good.
We've talked about some of the needs there, the grading, of course, and some of the bridges that are downhill, and most of them are downhill because they're at the creek. Uh, we need some grades in the front and back, keep the water from running through. We've talked about, uh, putting on a, a checklist, timetable, uh, cleaning off the abutments where the, the, um, arches where they meet the abutments. We got to, got to get into practice with cleaning the dirt and, uh, wet off of those, so we have lots of things tonight. I'm, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're interested in that because we need to start making those changes. We have never had that done before, so we need to take care of that.
Yeah, the bridges are old enough that when you were building roads also, uh, you can see it where, uh, we've improved the surfaces.
Yep.
And it's raised. We got them higher than, uh, the entrance of those bridges. Uh, I know you already know this, but the drainage, um, at both ends of those bridges on every one of them, um, needs special consideration.
Yeah, it does. And that's something we can, you can see grants doing some of that stuff. So that's what we just can't jump in and do those ourselves. Because all that historic preservation, they're all listed on the National Register Historic, uh, things, whatever they're called, structures, um, there are grants available for that type of work, so. Uh, as you get a plan together of what you'd like to see done to those, make sure we're aware of that and see if there, talk to Cindy, see if there might be grants that will be able to do that.
Yeah.
As you know, we just got a hundred thousand dollars to work on the belch. Now, that put us back about a year, um, because it's such a requirement to, to meet the requirements, but it's a hundred thousand dollars that our taxpayers don't have to come up to take care of.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Yeah, I get a lot of questions about, about your bridge and.
Okay.
I've got a lot of questions in this. Um, my response is normally, uh, just what it is. Um, uh, we're waiting for permits and approvals.
That's where we are.
Yeah.
If you recall, we had that approved before because we assumed, the engineers assumed that, that they would be able to peg into the concrete abutment that was there. So we approved all that. That process began, and they began to drill into it, put their rebar into it, to attach to it, and there was nothing they could, behind that wall was nothing. It was just trash. So that had scrap. That's when now that whole abutment has to be replaced rather than just new face on it.
Yeah.
And so that's what put it back. And that, and that part is when D and R got involved, and the opportunity came along. So we had to split off what had been done and what was remaining to be done, and we could get a grant to what's remaining to be done, but that meant then getting all new permits, and, and D and R takes, and, and the, you know, I remember managing it. All takes forever to get this permit done, so that's where we are with that stuff.
Yeah, and the Highway Department, and, uh, last week did submit a, uh, statement to, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, just, uh, confirming that we would not do any work, uh, on that bridge or at that location. And that was a requirement from, uh, the Corps of Engineers.
Good.
So, uh, the county did submit that timely.
Good. You're good. Hang in there. Keep at it. I don't have nothing else. Okay?
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So what do you do nights now? You don't have a, a grill to take care of every night?
We haven't closed yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
No.
All right. Well, good luck. It'll work.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. You have anything for us, ma'am? Were you just, uh, nope, okay. Are you either? And just here to see? Okay. Cindy has something for us. Cindy has a letter of support here. She'd like the commissioners to be involved with. Let me read this letter to you. It's the Indiana Broadband Office, and, um, it comes from the commissioner, says I am writing to, uh, says I because I'm the one that signs the letter if we approve it. Says I'm writing to communicate Park County's strong support to endorse mainstream fiber networks as our community's broadband service provider. After extensive discussions and through evaluations of proposals from other providers, we are confident to advocate for mainstream fiber networks gaining B E D grant opportunities. That, I don't know what that is. Our first meeting with, uh, this company happened in July of twenty twenty-four, and have been pleased as we continue to build a beneficial and positive relationship. We are excited about M S F N's proposal, which includes all efficient build-out plan consisting of three hundred twenty-one fiber miles and serving forty-two hundred and twenty passings. We are encouraged that the high-speed connectivity also includes an affordable price tag. M S F N proven track record and reliability in rural broadband continues to give us confidence as we choose to endorse them to be our provider. We firmly believe M S F N is the ideal partner for our broadband expansion efforts and strongly recommend them for B grant opportunities. So that's the letter. You okay with that letter of support?
I am.
Then we just need a motion then to approve that?
I make a motion. We approve, uh, the letter of support that, uh, has been given to us.
And I'm second that. All fair and sound.
Aye.
Okay. There you go. Thank you very much. All right. We have a burn ban request. Um, we, uh, we always wait for the, um, volunteer fire department chiefs to request a burn ban in the county. It's not our position that we should be telling them what their needs are. They're perfectly competent, uh, competent to do that. And to this point, we had not received any requests for a burn ban. However, last night I did get two requests, one from Bridgestone, and, I mean, one from Bellmore and one from Marshall. And then I got another one today from a, from another entity. And so, uh, the need they're realizing is there. Information Science I got from Kurt Landzone at the Extension Office. It is he who provides information to Purdue and to Homeland Security on the, the need. Uh, he, it was his, um, feeling that up to this point, there was not sufficient fuel on the ground to really be a threat of sustained burn on a wildfire, but he says that's changed in the last week, so now there is. So he requests also that we would put a burn ban. So I contacted the commissioners and informed them of those requests that we had, and asked our attorney if he would draft up a document here for us to, uh, to be able to impose such a burn ban. And, uh, I won't read the whole thing to you, but the burn bans pretty much says that no open burning, like a, like a big pile of, of, uh.
Brush.
Brush or anything to burn. You can still use campfires. You can still use a designated pit of, of a normal size, and, uh, all other fires then would, would be, uh, unavailable. Um, so I don't think I have any other things. I can read the four here, just to make sure everyone understands. Campfires and other recreational fires, unless enclosed on a fire ring with dimensions of twenty-three inches higher or higher, um, would be, would be prohibited. Um, open burning of any kind using dimensional fuel such as wood or other combustible matter, except grills fueled by charcoal, brickheads, or propane. So those would not be prohibited. The burning of debris such as timber or vegetation, including debris that results from building construction activities or windstorm debris. Couldn't burn that out in the open. And use of burn barrels for any open burning in residential structures. If you have a trash barrel in your backyard, you burn, burn your trash, you can no longer do that. Charcoal from permitted grill shall not be removed from the grills until the charcoal has been thoroughly extinguished. So those are the four requirements. So I make the motion that we adopt, um, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, um, a countywide burn ban, which would be effective immediately.
And in place until revoked by vote, by the commissioners.
And until further notice then.
Nice. I get that.
Twenty twenty-four thirteen. All fair and sound. Aye. All right. So for all those who need to share that word, we are now in a burn ban, understanding that fire pits are okay, you know, campfires at your house are okay. Um, burning barrels are not okay. Burning brush piles are not okay. Burning off, uh, fields is not okay. Uh, just local contained, um, fire pit type activity and char, and charcoal grills, charcoal or propane grills are okay. All right, there we are. Thanks, Nick. Appreciate that. I guess I'll have to rub and use that.
It's got the same day, same meeting when you see, you guys send it twice.
Yeah, okay. We teach to impose these things on people. Hate to affect anybody's lives, those kind of things, but sometimes you have to. When the fire chiefs ask, it's what we've done.
Should he copy her?
Yeah, they're very good about that.
Thanks. All right. Um, we also have an ordinance requested from a he, Health Department. If you recall, back in two thousand nine, I guess, the transimmersion license was done, and then we passed a, an ordinance, um, during the COVID time, requiring that a landowner was responsible and would, uh, be responsible and make sure that all of his vendors that he rents land to have a transimmersion license. And so that made sense to us then, and it's worked out very well. So if I have a merchant on my property, and I'm, I'm charging him rent, and he saw my property selling goods during the coverage festival, and it turns out that he does not have A T M L, not only will the, the merchant be fined, but the landowner will be fined as well. The only hope for that is that if you're putting people on your property, it's your responsibility to make sure they're doing legal activities. And legal means you have to have that transimmersion license. The Health Department is asking us to include, along with the transimmersion license, a health permit if a health permit is required for the activity they do. So that's what this ordinance is, is about, is requesting that the commissioners include health permits along with the transimmersion, uh, license. Uh, be the responsibility of those renting property to vendors as well as the vendors themselves. I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the request.
Okay. So we probably don't have to act on this now because it wouldn't take effect anyway during this coverage.
Correct. It, it would be for next year.
So.
I don't know if they're aware of that or not, but I mean, it, it, because we'd have to publish it and then have thirty days and.
I'd recommend that we table it until Danny is back too, and Danny see, because he's also involved with that kind of a thing, and see what feedback we may get.
You could get back with Liddy.
Yeah.
And just tell her that even the timing, had we done it tonight, would not.
Yeah.
Made it, uh, for this year, just so she knows.
Yeah.
I don't know whether she has other means. I think she would have other means of enforcing, but she'll just need to go to those other means for this year until we can get that for next year.
Okay. Yeah, I can pass that one.
You might tell her. I, I can speak for Bruce, of course, but generally I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
It's definitely a requirement. I think the landowner ought to be making sure that they're legal, they're doing legal activity. We, there's no other time that I can have someone come on on my property and do illegal activity, and I wouldn't be responsible for that.
Right.
So you go take care of that.
It just gives them easier enforcement mechanism, because they can, right now, they can enforce through the state's enforcement mechanism, but this would allow it easier on them, uh, which I think is why they requested it.
Okay.
It makes sense, but.
Yeah.
Just timing wise, we can't do it for this year, so.
All right. Tom, Yvonne Pence, they here?
I haven't seen anybody, I guess.
And Christina Miller? Did you have something you wanted to bring up, ma'am?
Uh, well, I'm the one that had talked to Cassie and have been talking to Beth Martin about property cross removals, a serious issue.
Okay.
And the Sheriff Fossil sent out, uh, ordinance about. Beth called me and said there was a meeting, a special meeting the twenty-sixth.
That would be maybe for the Plan Commission?
And that was my question, and she thought I should definitely be there then to voice my opinion.
Is Chris Marshall present now?
I don't know who the Plan Commission.
We filed two, two today. I don't know if this is one of them or not, but there were two forwarded to my office as far as zoning violations, uh, and nuisance properties and, um.
Remember what the address is, or if you heard it?
I do not, and it's not in my email. That's what I was just looking for, but I approved them today. They came from Beth, so.
I bet that's it.
It's probably that.
Really, the Plan Commission's done, historically done very well with getting those taken care of. It's a slow process, though, because you have to give the person plenty of notice, then you have to give them adequate time. And the wording is significant improvement. Well, who judges what's significant improvement or not? We've had cases where we've had multiple vehicles out there in violation, and so maybe they'll move a couple. Well, is that significant improvement? And they still got fifteen more, so that's a tough call, but we can check with Beth, or if you check with her, but it's not our special meeting, so it must be the Plan Commission having a special meeting, and she can tell you that. They typically meet out at the fairgrounds at the Extension Office.
Okay.
And typically it's, I want to say the third Thursday.
Four o'clock on, four o'clock on Thursday, five o'clock on Thursdays usually.
The last Thursday or third Thursday of the month?
Thursday, be the twenty-sixth, so that's probably the.
I, I would.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, yeah. Just, and just to make sure they're on top of that, because she, Cassie did a really good job with that. I know Beth will try to do that, do as well, so.
There was, there was one we needed more information on. I don't, I don't know which one it was, but.
The tough part about that is, and I remember having a discussion with some folks that came in one night, his neighbors, and neighbors were fighting over this property. He just didn't like the way his property, his neighbor's property looked, but everything that he had piled, he had piles of lumber on his yard. Looked like awful. I mean, just looked awful. But it wasn't illegal. And so the tough part is it's not sufficient just for something to be ugly. It has to be in violation of something, and that has to be some code in it they're in violation of, and that's the tough part, making sure. That's why I think they knew so slowly, just to make sure that they are actually in some violation of some existing statute.
The, the statute also requires you to give them a notice and give them thirty days to comply before you can even file the case. And then once you file the case, it gets a court date, and the court date sometimes can be several months out, and then sometimes, depending on how the court case goes, the judge sometimes will give them an additional period of time to comply.
I think you do it just right. You're being patient with them, but, but you got to keep nudging them along. You got to make sure somebody's moving on that, or we're going to get lost in the process and just go away.
I thought he would know I was serious since I've been here.
I think it's great. I appreciate that. And all of us, all of us, none of us want to see that stuff out there, so I appreciate when somebody has a reason and, and they pick that up and run with that. I know Cassie would go out and find things, but unless somebody had brought it up, you're not going to know that that's there. It's just not going to happen, so don't be, uh, don't be discouraged. Keep clawing along there, and they'll move it.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else have anything for the good cause? Is there a motion due, juror?
I make a motion, juror.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
What's kind of bridge coming up? Do you guys have any special considerations? We have, uh, uh, some manpower right now, uh, some guys that could, uh, really get work done.
Well, it's nothing new, and, and we get accused a lot of, of people, uh, of the Highway Department just taking care of the covered bridge routes, which of course is not true, but, but they always think that. But you're always cut and brushed anyway, and so my only encouragement would be that if there are covered bridges, that are going to get brushed, cut, cut sometime anyway. You might look at those to see if that, if now's the time to, to cut brush.
Yeah.
It's not that you're not doing some other job to take care of the covered bridge route for the tourists and not take care of it ourselves. You're cutting brush every day anyway. But, so you might look and see if there are some bridges that might need some, some, uh, T L C screws.
Yeah, my consideration is the volume of traffic, um, and public safety. So if you guys see something, I've been talking to Jason and Brad of the Service Department, um, now, good time to make that effort.
Yeah.
So just wanted to throw that out there if you guys had some good, um.
I know, I, I just want you to know, and probably say, but I've, I've told you a lot of times before, I think you're doing, doing a fine job. It's brand new to you, brand new techniques. You're having to, you're having to abide by restrictions you've never had to abide by before with. Even when you were in Alaska and that, that town that you were with, uh, Dillon, um, they had money. So you, even that, even with a private town like that, I mean, a corporate town like that, money probably wasn't an issue like it is now because you're talking Alaska here, so they had funds. And if you needed something, you could pretty well take care of that. That's just not the case here. It's, we're very selective in what we do, so. I think you're going to get a lot of support all the way down the road and just, just hang tough and keep doing what you're doing.
Yeah, and I would say that, sure, we'll say a lot, not a lot of money, but we have, um, the personnel.
Yeah.
We have, uh, shots we're, we have a lot of good things.
You do. Just so you know, also, uh, Matt Steckly looked at the, uh, Highway Garage Roof, and I brought that up to the, the, uh, uh, council before, that we're looking at doing something with that. He's going to come with two proposals, one just an overlay of what we already have, and then the other would be a, a complete removal and, and replacement. Um, at the overlay would come with a twenty-year warranty, so that may be, but he's going to bring both proposals. We'll include you in that discussion when it comes up, because you're more into that other. He also says that a lot of the brick work, as you're, I mean, the block work, as you are aware, uh, is pretty, um, it lost moisture, a lot, a lot of moisture in it. So that can be CO2 to spot back my happening, so we, we don't want to get anywhere. We're getting mold issues and those kind of things, but I'll include you in all those discussions because you see it more than we do, so. But I don't want you to let Matt's working, working on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. That, uh, helps with morale too.
It does. It does. You got to have a good place to work. It's got to be, be a nice place to work, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all favor of Jurnings. Yeah.
Aye.
For, for Jurnings. Thanks, folks. Appreciate you.